... by Alderman O'Brien, Second Ballman Wolf, for the approval of Scott Savati as the new First Ward Alderman. Kirk, call the roll.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Bodderman?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Wolf? Stark?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
So that vote is eleven yess, no nos, two absent, and one missing. All right, Scott, if you would come forward if you'd like to bring anybody from your family with you. We're gonna do it up here in a circle, we got you on TV. If you would be so kind as to raise your right hand, I ask you to me. I, Scott Savati.
I, Scott Savati.
Having been elected?
Having been elected.
To the office of First Ward Alderman?
To the office of First Ward Alderman.
In the city of Batavia?
In the city of Batavia.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage?
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do you solemnly swear and affirm?
Do you solemnly swear and affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the city of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of First Ward Alderman?
Of the office of First Ward Alderman.
To the best of my ability. Before we adjourn, I'd ask the new Alderman if he'd like to make any comments?
Sure. First off, I'm excited to be here and looking forward to serving. I know it's a servant leader role and I've just been in Batavia for a long time and really looking forward to contributing and help shaping the path of this great town.
Thank you. Can I entertain a motion for the adjournment of the City Council meeting so we can move to the Committee of the Whole Meeting?
So moved. Second?
Moved Alderman Brown, Second Ballman Serrone. Kirk, take a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, and Alderman Brown, I'll turn the seat over to you.
You wanna stay there?
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the Committee of the Whole Meeting to order. It is, I guess we're gonna wait just a minute. All right, we'll call the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Tuesday, October 25th to order. It is 7:35 PM. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Rosado?
Here.
Atack?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chanson? Wolf?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Holman? Mueller?
Here.
Bodderman?
Here.
Serrone?
Here.
And McFadden?
Here.
Okay, we're recording. Next item on the agenda is items to be removed.
We forgot Savati, and we need to take Holman off.
Oh, oh wait, didn't know about Holman. Okay.
Yeah, Holman resigned, and we had to add Savati.
Yes, that would be important when it...
I'm here.
Savati.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is item two, which is items removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything? I mean, nothing. We're gonna move on to item three, which is matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Does anybody have anything that is not on the agenda that they'd like to address us on? Okay, we'll go on to item number four, which I guess I should have mentioned, I would like to change the agenda a little bit. Per Chief Shire's request, we are gonna move Ordinance 16-65 up in front of the public hearings. We can conduct the public hearings after 7:30, but the chief asked if we can move this ordinance up to the beginning, so. Item, Ordinance 16-65 is amending Class H liquor license to create a nano, nano or nano, I'm not sure if I pronounce that right, brewery license. Alderman Atack?
That is what it is, and we have, we're creating subclasses of the Class H liquor license, either H1, H2, or H3, and this is kind of in, I think, response to the fact that we do have someone that is interested in doing this, and I think it's also an industry that's growing. So Chief, do you wanna talk about Heidi and her husband's business?
Yes, thank you, Alderman. As you see my cover letter, and you have Ordinance 1665, and this is Alderman Atack said, we are creating subclass of Class H, two classes of microbrewery and nano brewery, and it's kind of based upon volume of sales, but it does permit all the things that a microbrewery or a nano brewery would wanna do. I did have consultation with City Attorney Drendel, and he drafted this. David and Heidi Files are here tonight, the petitioners, or applicants, and they would, I realize you're only creating the class at this point in time, you're not awarding them a liquor license, which would be something that may happen, but I thought it important that David and Heidi make a presentation, what their vision is, what they intend to do in the short term, what they may wanna do in the longer term, and they can talk about, you know, their operation, so. David, Heidi?
Thank you very much for having us tonight.
Yeah, come on up and use the mic so we can get you on tape.
All right, thanks for having us tonight. I'm Heidi, this is my husband David. We are longtime residents here, we're really thankful that you're even considering this amendment to the city code. We think that it's a really important step in welcoming this kind of industry to our town. We've been here for a long time, we're raising our family here. We actually both have day jobs. This is kind of a part-time hobby business, it's a dream. David's been recognized and awarded craft brewer for 12 years. People really like his beer, and we're excited to start this venture here in downtown. We named the brewery after the city, Energy City Brewing, and David can maybe talk a little bit to the vision, and since he does all the magic with the sciences.
Thanks, Heidi. Yeah, so David Files, I am a chemical engineer, I work at a fuel ethanol plant in Rochelle, where we make millions of gallons of ethanol on an annual basis. The 10% ethanol you have in your vehicles and the fuel is most likely from our plant, so. I've been in the ethanol industry for over 10 years now, and I'm really excited about this new adventure, and I'm really appreciative of the support that the community's put in so far. To sum it up, our goal is to make wonderful beer that generates enthusiasm in the community while supporting responsible consumption of alcohol. And that's my goal here, and I think providing an opportunity for nano breweries, which is very small scale, in some communities they call them garage breweries, or, you know, backyard breweries or something like that. I think it's a great opportunity for expanding the craft beer industry, allowing smaller folks to get into the industry, as you know, after prohibition it became such a mega brewery operation, and the last 30 years we've seen it's moved into the craft and small brewer facilities, so we're really excited about the opportunity to continue that trend.
I don't know, do you know where the location is? Underneath Limestone, it's a place where we'll be brewing, and eventually, we hope to sell out of that location, cash and carry out the door, possible samples within the ordinance as it allows, similar to if you were to go to Jewel and they have someone giving you a sample of wine. But not a bar, not a restaurant, and not open all the time. Special releases, kind of create some hype, get the energy. We've had a lot of really positive, excited feedback already, so I think it'll be a benefit to the community, and we're really excited. We've had really wonderful support from both the city and from Batavia Enterprises. We just feel lucky and blessed and excited to be here, so. Any questions for us? Thank you.
I have a question, to David.
Yeah.
Where's your beard?
Where is it?
Don't all brewers have beards?
Oh, beards, oh yeah, yeah, then you can get the yeast in the beard, and there's brewers that recultivate it. No, I, I'm a little bit of a peculiar brewer in some ways, in that I am also somewhat of a fitness advocate, you know, I'm not the typical brewer, I guess you might say. I have a little bit more like, how you said, a science background, and I really love the craft of it, you know, I'd just as well be making the beer than drinking the beer myself, so if I could pick one or the other, I'd probably be the maker of it, so, yeah, so who knows, that might come later.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, look, I just wanna make the comment, I've had the honor and opportunity for a number of years to work with Mrs. Files on a number of projects she's recognized as a leader in the planning field in the Chicagoland region and works out of Kane County here, and is certainly somebody that's highly regarded, so she comes with my very best recommendation to you as somebody that I think is most capable and competent of being a partner in this business. I can't speak for Mr. Files, 'cause I've met him a couple times, but I've had firsthand experience with Mrs. on a number of complex issues over the years, and she's always been a leader in bringing resolve to complicated and complex issues, so I think we've got a winner on our hands here with this couple.
Thank you so much, I'll check that off my bucket list. Would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's gonna go on, consent agenda?
Any opposed? I didn't answer that question, no, okay. Eyes have it. Well, maybe we should talk about it.
Okay, that sounds a good idea.
Nice community.
Regular agenda. All right, then, per the amended agenda here, we're gonna go on to the public hearing, which I'm gonna call to order at 7:45 PM. This is a public hearing for the 10-year report for the Tax Increment Financing District Number Three, and Scott Buneen, our Community Development Director, is gonna talk about what this is in front of us for.
Yes, the statute was changed a few years back regarding TIFs, and certain TIFs have to file a 10-year report on the activities and progress that has been made since the TIF has been created. We don't have to do this for TIF I because it's old, TIF III, though, has to have a 10-year report. So what we've done is prepared the 10-year report, it's been put on our city website, it's attached to your packet, and it basically outlines the items that the statute requires us to describe as to, you know, what has been going on in the TIF since that time. The report outlines the amount of expenditures that we've had, the amount of revenues that we've generated, the status of different projects that were called out for in the TIF District Redevelopment Plan, the amount of public and private investment, and any other performance data that's required. Under statute, we are required to publish a public notice and have a public hearing on this report. All it does is require the council to open a public hearing, take public testimony, and then close the public hearing. It does not require any specific action by the council, it is meant to just be a public informational type of thing. We did publish a notice in the newspaper in regards to this public hearing, so at this point in time, we can take any testimony that the public may have, and then after that, we can close the public hearing, as part of the item.
Okay, thank you, Scott. So as Mr. Buneen said, this is a public hearing, so if anybody in the public has any comments or any testimony that they would like to produce for us here, please come on up to the podium and give us your comments.
Yvonne Dinwiddie, 1156 Pine Street. I will reaffirm what I've said for years. I'm absolutely 150,000% opposed to TIF districts. I have not had enough time to give you 100% of all the details. I'm doing major work on TIFs. I intend to go to the state legislature and do what I can. I'm going to work with the city of Chicago if I can, as well as Kane County, to see if we can't get rid of TIF districts, because they're really bad news for the taxpayers. Here are some of the things that the citizens of Batavia should know and question, and some of the questions that I'm researching, I'm still working on, so I'll tell you what the questions are, if you wanna do your own research, maybe you can get the answers. There are 184 parcels in TIF III. The base value is $12,547,169, of which $175,702 is exempt from taxes. This is according to the TIF parcel report by the TIF District Current Values from Kane County, and according to the Tax Extension Detail Report from Kane County, the total EAV for TIF III is $14,115,636, while the TIF base EAV is $10,887,701. Your guess is as good as mine as to which of the, these is the true base, whether it's the 10 million or the 14 million, EAV, or 12 million, I'm sorry. According to the Tax Extension Detail Report for Kane County, the TIF portion of the tax received by the city was $312,115,32. According to the base, the school district would have received approximately $69,726, whereas if there had been no TIF, the school district would be receiving approximately $199,884 more in 2015. So that means just the school district alone did not get $199,884, which we, the taxpayers, end up having to make up. And the sad thing is, is when the school district raises its rate, they still don't get anything more than the base, so it doesn't really give them any more money. So we can pay more taxes and give more to a TIF district, but the school districts and the park districts and the rest of the taxing bodies, including Kane County and our city's general fund, get screwed.
Yvonne, I have a question for you regarding that logic. If the land was the same base as it was, and it had never been improved upon, because there was no TIF money that ever went into it, would the EAV have gone up to the number that you're saying now? Because if the land had never been improved, so let's say in TIF District I, if those townhouses had never been built, because there was no money given to the builder to be able to build those townhouses, would the land value have gone up to reach the EAV that you're saying that the taxpayers are now subsidizing?
You can't know that any more than I can, because a lot of public development can go in, and the EAVs will raise. EAVs raised, we've been here 30 years, and the EAVs have raised, except from 2006, 2008, when the bottom fell out of the real estate market. But when you, when you just keep doing these but-for things and giving out free money to developers, you never know whether there would be property, whether the values would go up or not.
But conversely, it could have stayed empty and never gone up?
It could have, yes, but if, even if the increment, even if the values had gone up slightly, the TIFs last for 23 years, and in this case, you extended it for 12 years. So now that's 35 years in a TIF. That means for 35 years, our school district, our park district, and our other taxing bodies did not get the full value of the tax dollars that they paid, even though all of those people paid 100% of the taxes they were required to pay, their assessed value. Let me go on here, and then if you have more questions, we'll try to answer them.
I just have a quick question regarding that same conversation. By that same token, we also don't know that the land would not have declined, and the tax rates could have been even lower than what they were, what they were stopped at.
That's true.
And I think that's where it's, it could have been higher, it could have been lower, it could have been any number of things.
Well, as the mayor said, a leap of faith.
Right.
You know, and I think when you're looking at taxes, and you're looking at what people have to pay, you have to do a little bit more than a leap of faith. TIF III should have expired in 2027, but was recently extended for 12 years, so now it won't expire until 2039. That means that our schools and parks and other taxing bodies will not receive their full share of the taxes paid by the citizens until 2039. In addition to that, when this TIF was extended, if you really wanted to say the TIF was successful, instead of extending it with the old base, you could have raised the base and given, given the schools and the parks the addition on the TIFs for that, for that period of time from the 23 years. If we read the memo to the Cow on October 3rd, 2016, this hearing's supposed to be about the 10-year report on the TIF. Under alternatives in that memo, there are no pros, no cons, no budget impact, no staffing impact. Why not? The city believes the TIF is successful. However, if it is successful, then why the need to extend it for 12 years? Furthermore, the city's planning to do an end run around the TIF laws by shifting parcels from extending TIFs into a new TIF V, TIF parcels. That means the extension is not 12 years, but the full 23 years when those parcels are placed in a new TIF. The city's purchased property in, that is in TIF III, and plans to purchase property that is in TIF I, which takes those properties completely off the tax rolls. That means so that even if we were getting base tax, now that the city owns it, we get nothing. It's zero. Who is benefiting from the TIF District money? How many parcels within TIF III receive TIF money in the form of grants, facade improvements, and other improvements? How many of those properties in the TIF receive more than one form of TIF money or other incentives? How much was given in incentives to businesses coming in? Rent subsidies, building improvements, et cetera? And how long has each recipient business stayed in Batavia after having received those grants, incentives, et cetera? And how many have moved on to greener pastures? You all should understand that the parcel owner would most likely receive the TIF money, and so if a business rents the property, it is likely that the property owner will have received multiple TIF money as businesses moved out. Examples, Walgreens owned by Batavia Enterprises. How much money has the city received in clawback money because recipients of the TIF money or incentives or facade improvements didn't stay? How many parcels in the TIF District are now, or have been, on the tax delinquency list? And how many properties has the city purchased during the properties, taking the properties off the tax rolls completely? We know of a number of them. According to the Kane County Chronicle's published tax delinquent list, on October 6, 2016, there are seven parcels in TIF III on that list. The total delinquent tax is $29,128.19. What is interesting is that there are properties in TIF I on that list as well, of which several are Larson Becker properties. This is property that the city is going to buy, and purchased for over $1 million. And why would we give top dollar for properties that are tax delinquent? Now, in all fairness, it's possible that some of these properties might have paid their taxes late after the list was already given to the newspapers, but still, if these TIFs are so successful, why can't the property owners pay their taxes on time? Can the city actually show which parcels have actually generated an increased increment and show a cost-benefit analysis for each property within the TIF? To show an honest picture would require that each parcel list the amount of money it received from the TIF, what the actual increment for the property is for each of the 10 years, and show the actual increase in increment for properties that did not receive TIF money, facade grants, rent subsidies, or other money. Can the city show how much of the tax, total tax increment each of the other taxing bodies have lost over the past 10 years, including the city, and how that affects projects and maintenance that should have been done and still need to be done for the entire city, and how the TIFs actually impact the total needs of the city taxpayers? How many additional fees and costs and SSAs have been proposed and/or added because there is not enough money in the coffers to pay for the needs of the whole city? We already have heard of several, and I've been complaining about several of them for years. When we look at the expense reports for TIF III, please note how much of the TIF money was spent on studies, surveys, appraisals, plans, and other professional and administrative services. Additionally, we should note how much money was spent on high maintenance, quote, "improvements", unquote, such as bricks. When we pay for development, we also need to ensure that we account for all the money spent, as for the purchase of the church property of $715,000, $400,000 to construct a parking structure that will now be torn down, purchase the Freidendahl property, and the Fission property, and now the Larson Becker property. But from what I've seen of the reports, only the bare minimum analysis has been done, and certainly not in the detail that would show the real cost benefits to the taxpayers. Now, there are over 9,000 parcels, taxable parcels in the city, and 400, I believe it was 419 of them are in TIF districts, and we have over 300 that are exempt, and we have others that are industrial. You know, that's a lot of properties in the TIF District, and when you look at the base, that's a lot of money going away. And when I look at how many businesses have left Batavia, they've come in, they've gotten rate breaks on electricity, they've gotten facade improvements, they've gotten sign waivers, whatever, and then they're gone in a couple of years. These TIFs aren't going away in two or three years, or five years. They're here for 23 years to start with, and then if they're extended, it's another 12 years. Kane County has 122 TIF districts, 122, just in Kane County. And Cook County is raising Kane because they're losing so much money in TIF districts. If these businesses cannot afford to create their own business and make it profitable, then why should we, the taxpayers, prop them up? And that's exactly what we're doing. We're propping up businesses. We're betting on the come, and the come doesn't come, not always. And in fact, I should tell you, we, we keep saying that this Aurora Outlet Mall is a successful TIF, and it is right now, but so was the Huntley Mall. And I didn't even realize that Huntley, the Huntley Outlet Mall was in Kane County until I had gone over to the county, and they were telling me how much money they're losing in Huntley. So, you know, a leap of faith is not a great leap of faith, as far as I'm concerned. Now, does anybody have questions?
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have anything?
Sylvia Keppel, 1420 Becker Avenue. I just want to refer you, when you had questions about the, about what would have happened had there not been a TIF. There was a study recently, and it's quoted all over, it's very easy to find if you start searching TIFs, a Chicago study, that came, it was huge, it was very comprehensive, came to the conclusion that the TIFs produce little more than what would have happened by natural growth. So I encourage you to go look that up, look up the Chicago study on TIFs. And my comment on the report is, I'm a bit disturbed by the inclusion, in the study, it starts referring to the redevelopment in the Shodine Project, and that is not in TIF III. Well, it's in TIF III now, but it's not going to be in TIF III, it's going to be in a new TIF, and if it had remained in TIF III, then this project wouldn't be done. So to include that in the project and the report on TIF III, I find disingenuous, and would recommend that it be taken out of the TIF report, because it makes it look like there's a lot more growth going on in TIF III than there really is when you consider that this is not going to be in TIF III, it's going to be in TIF V. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody on the console have any comments? Okay, then I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Stark, second by?
Second.
McFadden. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried. Move then on to item number six, which is the public hearing on the annexation agreement for the Forest Reserve of Kane County for part of Illinois Prairie Path. Scott Buneen's memo. Alderman Stark, do you have anything on this one, or should we just turn it right over?
Just turn it over, Scott.
Scott?
This is something we've been working on with the Forest Reserve for a while. Part of the prairie path is not located in Part of the Prairie Path is not located in the city limits, parts of it are. And in order to clarify the jurisdiction and put it all within the city limits, we managed to negotiate an annexation agreement with the county to annex the remaining parts of the trail that are surrounded by the city limits into the city. The impetus for this was the trail emergency crossing lights that we had. Part of the issue with that is that the city did expend some funds for those, but technically two of those intersections are not actually in the city limits right now. So when we started looking at the situation, we said, well, why don't we see if we can annex all of the trail ends so that it's all within the city limits if there's ever an incident? We don't have to worry about, you know, is it Fire Protection District versus the city? Is it County versus city policing and that type of thing? So County did agree with us. It does not create any substantive changes to the land. It's going to still remain forest preserve, it'll still be maintained by the forest preserve. The only thing that's going to change is we're going to rezone it to a public open space district, which is comparable to what of the trail is within the city limits already. So that's the main reason for it, and that's pretty much the sum total of what's going on here.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Anyone have any questions? Hey, Dave, did you want to close the public?
Okay, this is a public hearing, so does anybody in the public have any comments on this ordinance that's in front of us?
I just have a question. Are you saying that the county's going to maintain it, or the forest preserve is going to maintain it?
They will still maintain it as they have been. There will be no changes.
Okay. It won't cost us anything more?
No.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Then we're going to have a motion to close the public hearing.
Said moved.
Second.
Motion by McFadden, second by Serrone, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's carried. Okay, we're going to go on then to ordinance 16-63, which is authorizing execution of an annexation agreement with the Forest Preserve District of Kane County for part of the Illinois Prairie Path. Alman Stark.
That is primarily what Scott talked about. I don't think there's a whole lot more to add to it. It closes the gap in the city boundaries at the southeast part of the community, allows city services to be provided at street and path intersections. There are no negatives to the annexation. The budget impact is there were preparation fees of $400 and recording fees will be about $100. There's no staffing impact. And this is the installed path crossing and warning lights and signs at Wagner, Reddent, and Hart Road down at that end of the Prairie Path. Would someone like to make a motion to approve ordinance 16-63?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Serrone. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, so this goes on to City Council with a recommendation for approval. We'll go on then to ordinance 16-64, annexation and zoning part of the Illinois Prairie Path. Alman Stark.
This is, I just, is this an additional part, Scott?
This rezones it then to the public open space district.
Okay, terrific, thank you. Would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Serrone. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so this goes on to the City Council also.
I'd say both of these could probably go on the consent agenda.
Can they go on consent agenda, even though we have to have, do we have to have a public hearing on this at the council level?
No, we just had that tonight. So they can go on consent.
All right, so they can all go on consent agenda.
Although it, we actually, in retrospect, we may want to talk about it because there was some talk on Facebook when the signs went up that there was going to be a public hearing, and people wanted to know what we were doing on the Prairie Path. So it might be good just to talk about it a little bit at council so people are clear on that, now that I think about it, because there was some confusion. People wanted to know what we were going to do on the path.
That's fine, you can talk about it. Okay, we're going to go on then to the item number nine, which is discussion on the storage of recreation vehicles on driveways. Alman Wolf.
Or, no.
I'm sorry, Alman Atech.
Okay, this is just a discussion for tonight. Michael O'Brien brought it to the council because he'd been contacted by someone in his ward about maybe tightening up our regulations about storing recreational vehicles. And Scott provided some examples of what other communities have done in the area, and they're all a little more restrictive than what we are currently doing. So maybe we want to take a look at it. Scott, do you want to say anything before we start discussing?
Yeah, I mean, this ends up being really a community preference issue because, you know, no matter what you do, you're going to make somebody mad. You know, some people, you know, are happy to have, you know, these types of things if they own them. Others think they're unsightly and, you know, they shouldn't be located in a residential area, or, you know, there should be somewhere in between. So it really depends on, you know, what the council would like to see for the community. You know, certainly, you know, one option is to tighten up the regulations and to, you know, do some things that are different than what we're doing now. Did provide you some sample regulations for some communities in the area. Most of them do, you know, either restrict them in the front yard, or they have certain time restrictions or size restrictions for these types of things. Keep in mind that, you know, most towns don't make a distinction for recreational vehicles between a large, you know, van-type recreational vehicle and a boat. They usually say, okay, you can have a certain size of a vehicle because, you know, it's hard to make some of that distinction between somebody that's got a jet ski versus somebody that's got a, you know, cabin cruiser in their front yard, or that type of thing. So there's certainly things you can do. We as staff are not providing a specific recommendation. At this point, we would just suggest having some discussion about it. If you were looking to have some changes happen, it does have to go in front of the plant commission. This is a component of our zoning ordinance. We would amend the zoning ordinance, which then requires a public hearing in front of the plant commission. And the plant commission would then make a recommendation and would come back to you for a final decision if there are changes that are desired.
Thank you. Anyone have any thoughts?
Hey, thoughts?
Yes, Susan.
Well, it's funny because I thought we did have an ordinance until Mike O'Brien's neighbor brought that forward, that, you know, they weren't happy with the people across the street that had a big camper. And when we bought a camper, the first thing we did was get storage, not at our house, so that we didn't have a camper sitting around in our driveway, because I wouldn't want my neighbors to look at it all the time. So based on reading all the regulations from the surrounding towns, I actually am kind of surprised we don't, aren't more restrictive. And I think in some ways it would make Rhonda's job a little easier when people have things that sit in their driveway for a long time and leaves collect around them and, you know, they look kind of unsightly. We're, you know, we're the, Rhonda's our first point of contact to call them and say, hey, you know, this looks like a mess in someone's yard. But, you know, I don't, I've never been a fan of overreaching government, but this is one where I'm kind of understanding. It's not so bad, like, if you live in Drew's neighborhood, you probably have a homeowners' association that regulates that. So you never have to think about it. When you live in the older parts of town, though, you don't. And so you kind of just rely on your neighbors to not want to have a camper or a boat sitting in their front yard. And since this came forward, as I drive around town, this is the time of year where people start bringing their campers home and parking them on their driveway. And there's a lot of them, you know, in the older parts of town. So I think it's good that we talk about this. I don't know where they would put them, but, you know, we might want to talk about it.
Marty?
Yeah, I have a bunch of neighbors that have these, and I've never heard anybody complain about it. Whereas the parking, overnight parking ban, when we were talking about that, there are arguments to be made for safety, or safety to have it, safety not to have it. But safety's a component of it. For this, there's no component of safety, it's about looks and aesthetics. And I think it is a large overreach when we start looking at that about purely based on aesthetics. Because I've got neighbors that don't like another neighbor's fence, do we start saying, nope, only a certain kind of fence? Do somebody wants a certain color on their house, another person doesn't like it? Where then is the line being crossed about where you can or can't have government dictate what somebody does on their own private property?
I bet your homeowners association has something to say about it.
I don't have a homeowners association.
You don't live in Mill Creek?
No.
Oh.
No, there is.
Oh, I thought you did.
He lives in those random.
And I would never, ever live in an area that had a homeowners association for these very reasons. I own my property, I want to be able to legally do what I want to do for my house. And I guess that's why, you know, neighbors around my area do have large boats, large campers, and it's never been an issue for anybody.
And, Mike?
I've gotten, you know, there was an email that came to me this recently, but I've gotten a number of phone calls in the past because some areas in the first ward where people have had recreational vehicles parked in their driveways. And I don't know how I feel about any of it, but, and I went and I drove around and looked, and some of them were in somewhat disrepair. And it just, the largest investment we all make is our homes. And, you know, your neighbor made a very large investment in their home, and if you're going to put a recreational vehicle and let it just fall into disrepair, that's going to have a negative impact. That's going to impact negatively on the people surrounding you. And I don't think that's right either. And so I don't know how to go about this, but we should have some restrictions. I don't, I don't know how to cut it up, but, I mean, I can appreciate Marty's comments, but we have to have some restrictions to protect the surrounding neighbors also. I mean, I drove by, last few days, I've been driving around the neighborhood, around the first ward, just going down the cul-de-sac, seeing what's going on in the first ward. And there are some people who got, ah, I mean, just all kinds of broken down vehicles in their yard, and there's one who had a truck, and it was paint all over, and I thought, they're poor neighbors. I mean, I, you know, I have it close to me in my vicinity, and I know my wife's not happy with it, but I just think we need to control some of it, or else things just ought to spiral downward, and that's not a good thing. So how we go about it, I don't know.
Can I just ask Scott a question? Don't we have an ordinance, I mean, to Mike's point, those are absolutely valid things that I would say are of concern, that we don't want to see the broken down, be it a boat, be it a truck, or whatever. Wouldn't that be solved by our, the dilapidated ordinance that we have regarding vehicles? Wouldn't that be covered under that, thereby able to take these situations where it's a broken down one? Nobody wants to see that.
Right. Yeah, there is, if it's a, particularly if it's a vehicle, and it's an inoperable vehicle, then yes, absolutely, we have the right to go after that and tag them for, you know, whatever the violation is. If it's a, let's use an example, let's say a boat with a trailer and the wheels off or something like that, it's not an operable vehicle, but we could probably go after that as a nuisance of some sort, you know, just because it's a piece of equipment in disrepair. So I mean, some of those things, yeah, we could go after, you know, if we're going after that type of thing. But, you know, obviously, we can't be everywhere, so if we see those situations, please let us know, and we'll follow up on them. But some of those circumstances, yes, absolutely, we could do that without any changes to the ordinance.
Well, I mean, I just, I just, there was one vehicle, a recreation vehicle on the street in the first ward that had windows missing. It's like, you know, I mean, these people aren't using it, it was on four tires, I mean, so it could roll. But it was still just falling into disrepair. But if that's your argument, well, we'll just roll it down the block and bring it back. I mean, it's, I don't know how to cut it up, like I said, but I think we need more restrictive measures.
Yeah. I just want to add one thing. If you live on Town Avenue, Marty, you do live in Mill Creek, and they do have a homeowners association.
It's defunct.
Yeah, I was part of the development.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's gone. There is no homeowner association.
Well, there are covenants and restrictions.
They're all expired.
There's been no homeowners association.
If there's nobody to enact them, it's like there is no homeowners.
But someone could pick it up.
It's gone.
I'm sure, aren't the covenants and restrictions, don't they, they run with the property?
Those run with the property.
So they are still there if someone wants to look at them.
Certain subdivisions have a homeowners association that dissolved because they're not maintaining property, they're not actively enforcing covenants.
But there's definitely covenants and restrictions that run with those properties.
And if the neighborhood wants to bring it up, it's going to take a majority of the neighborhood to be able to get it back and forth, to be able to enforce any of the covenants, even if they run with the property, and you're the 17th owner of the property. If there's not enough neighbors that want to go after that, it's defunct and it won't happen.
I don't know, I don't know, I wasn't aware of that.
If you have a restrictive covenant, though, and somebody's violating it, anybody in that subdivision could go after them and file a suit, as long as it's not considered something that's been dormant for too long. So if, you know, if, for example, if everybody's, if there's a restriction on trailers, and everybody's got a trailer, and nobody's been enforcing it for, you know, a long period of time, there's an argument to say that, you know, everybody's let that covenant go. So, and that's a, that's a fundamental line of some of that.
Dave?
To be controversial, I guess, play the devil's advocate, I know of a subdivision in the seventh ward where it's a townhome area, and they've got an active homeowners association. There's a family there that's got a trailer that they travel quite a bit during the summer. They bring the trailer home, and they prepare for their trips, and then they might leave it home for a week or two before they go on another trip. Well, their homeowners association is very active, and they won't let them park in the driveway, a recreational vehicle. So what does he do? Every night, he hooks up to it, he pulls it out into the street and calls the police department and says, I need to park my vehicle on the street overnight. So, kind of, you know.
But he doesn't keep it there all year? It's a short.
It's throughout the summertime, when he's bringing it home, getting it ready, using it, you know, leaving it there for a week or two in between trips, and then when he's unloading it, taking it and getting it ready, put back in storage during the winter. So he gets around the rule by doing what we were talking about with the no parking on the streets, and how do you control that? So I don't know where you're going to go with it. I agree with Scott, no matter what you do, you're not going to make everybody happy with this. And I kind of feel like, I agree with Mike, you know, you hate to see the dilapidated stuff laying around, but if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
But I, can I add something? I mean, I think it's more than aesthetics. It's affecting people's real estate values. It's affecting, and this is, as Mike said, one of our biggest investments. And if we don't keep our neighborhoods looking nice, then that puts downward pressure on the values of our homes. So when people are parking too many vehicles in their driveway, or too many vehicles on the street, or not taking care of their houses, then that affects the housing stock.
The problem, though, as I see it, is there are motorhomes that are well over $100,000. So you're now, you know, how do you say, okay, yours is 15 years old, and it's kind of faded, but yours is the most expensive, you know, Cadillac of RVs, so you get to park yours, but you can't park yours. So that's where we get into that, like.
I'm not saying that one is better than the other, and you were able to find storage.
Yeah. It's, a lot of people do.
And we are less restrictive than many surrounding communities. Laura, sorry. Go ahead.
No problem. One of the things that I noticed in the statutes that are more restrictive than ours that seems to perhaps be a compromise, we keep hearing these issues of the vehicles being unsightly to others. And many of the other ordinances that we reviewed provide that there must be screening. It must be either in a side yard or a backyard, and not in the front of the house, and that screening must be provided so that it's not visible to other people in the neighborhood. Perhaps this would be a nice compromise that would allow the owner of the recreational vehicle to still be able to have an option to store these things near their home, but then answer the issue of the other homeowners not having to see those and have their property values affected by it.
The only, the only thing, if I may, the only issue with the screening end of things is it depends on what the equipment is. I mean, if it's a jet ski, it's easy to hide it with a fence. If it's a 10-foot RV, you're not going to have a 10-foot fence to screen it. So, you know, you have to keep that in mind when you're looking at screening. You could put shrubs up and things that'll grow up over time to screen it, but, you know, that's not going to be an immediate solution, obviously. So, yeah, that's a possibility to do that. Several of the ordinances, you know, call for that.
Just, it's been brought up a couple of times now that these things affect property values, based on what studies.
Oh, you can find some studies.
Well, anybody can find.
Right. So, I mean, if we're not prepared, I don't think to provide studies, but I am sure there are studies on quality of housing and what you do to your houses and how it affects real estate value.
And what I was stating was my property values have never been higher, and I just was refinanced, and my property value for my appraisal rate is way above what I've even purchased it before. And I've got, I've got those large places like that.
Well, imagine what it would be if they weren't there.
Let me, let me finish. But, well, then, one, what about cars? What about a junky car? Does that affect a rate?
Yes.
Do, so then, do we start saying what kind of cars you can own? What kind of, how old your vehicle can be? No more rolling totals, no more beaters in your drive? No more rolling totals, no more beaters in your drive? If we're going to start valuing property and making determinations on real estate, which is not a government function, there is no legitimate reason for us to be concerned about raising or lowering property values through regulations. If we want to do that, go start your own neighborhood homeowners' association and run with those things. That is not for government to do.
Well, protecting the housing stock is in our strategic plan and plus it helps raise real estate taxes. I mean, there are a lot of reasons why we want to do that.
And do we have right now any studies before us that that is actually, you've stated it as fact, but I don't know that that's true.
Okay, well, that's a good point. We don't, we should do research.
May I just, I'm sorry, go ahead, Kevin. No, I, but, yeah, no, I was just going to say, we can go back and forth. I don't know if we have a concept. I would support a little more restrictions. I do agree that, I, in, in my ward, I don't get many complaints, I don't see it that often, so I'm not that worried about it either way, but I would support a, a little more, I, I like North Aurora's examples of giving a little timeframe to, to come in and move and keep it there, you know, for weekends or whatever. But should we kind of get an idea where everyone stands because if it's
Two other people.
Well, I just
Drew, do you have something?
Along the lines of what Nick said, Marty was talking about what kind, you know, is it, are we deciding what's nice? For me, it's not about what's nice, it's about the size of the thing parked in the yard. And if it's over, you know, a 20 to 30-foot motorhome parked in the driveway is a big difference from somebody's 16-foot aluminum fishing boat on a trailer. So, I, I think there's some level of something that's, that's reasonable. I'm not sure what it is, but I'd support perhaps, Scott, I think said, next step would be to have the plan commission take a look at it, make a recommendation. I would support going that route.
Okay, Kevin?
I, I agree with, um, Drew. I had more of a question for clarification, Scott. You know, reading through the material that sent us, um, the idea of a time element regarding parking, it seemed like that was kind of varied. I'm kind of curious if you could kind of sum up, do most of the other communities do it by, by a seasonal movement and not say by annual?
Uh, yeah, again
That's the impression I
We just have a small sampling of here, of, of communities here, but some, uh, you know, restrict them because they say, okay, well, you know, during the summer months, you're likely going to be taking it to, you know, wherever you take it to and, and, you know, it's not going to be there, but then in winter, you need a place to store it, so you're going to store it in your driveway. Others like North Aurora, they allow for, I think it was two weeks in the spring and two weeks in the fall to do the, you know, bring it there, clean it up, you know, that, and then you take it to your storage place. So, you know, each place is a little bit different. Some just allow 48 hours to do storage and cleanup without any timeframe of it at all and say, okay, you know, as long as you store it for 48 hours, you know, you're okay. So, it, it's, it's a, it's a big variety.
Okay. And then I was just curious, I, I'd say for example, it was seasonal and we went with something along those lines, how, how do you envision us enforcing something like that? Would it be based on a, a neighbor's complaint or would, would the code enforcement officer have to be going out patrolling this?
I'm going to use this as a pitch for my position, but if
Right.
If you hire another code enforcement officer, we'd be able to do proactive enforcement, but, um, you know, right now, um, you know, we would have to do it just on a complaint basis and, and sometimes when we're driving around, we see something that's blatant and obvious, we'll, 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 we'll follow up on it, but other than that, we'd have to just do it on a complaint basis.
Right. And, and I appreciate that because that was the, the thought that was in the back of my mind when looking at this and, and I, I keep referring back to, to a position Dave has articulated and that is the idea of looking at this in the context of the bigger picture. And if we're going to fine tune this, which I agree that there, there seems to be room here to do, um, uh, some fine tuning, um, I hope as the discussion progresses, we, we look at this idea of, of the enforcement side of it and what that means and if it means funding the, the next position, how are we going to fund that? And, and so there, there's sometimes, you know, the surface level response, which is, yeah, let's, let's address this, but there's the ancillary issues behind that that I, I hope we can discuss as well. So, I'm glad we're having the discussion and, and I think, um, Drew has a very good point when we talk about a difference and maybe that's where some, some type of compromise can be struck here. There's a big sight difference between a type B, um, motorhome and a type A or class A, uh, motorhome and, and maybe although it's kind of getting deep into the weeds on some of, maybe that's where we look at or the plan commission can look at as far as what vehicles can, uh, a type A or a class A is a large vehicle and, um, if there for four to six months or whatever can become a nuisance, whereas you get into a, um, you know, a recreational camper van, it's, it's, I think, a little bit more, um, tolerable from an aesthetics point of view, but that's, uh, that's, I guess all I had to say. But again, Dave, I, I think that when we, when we weigh this, um, going forward with it, that we, we try to look into the enforcement side of it and it's not just a matter of having it, a book or on, a regulation on the book that cannot be enforced or cannot be readily enforced. And I think that would go to, to Scott's position.
Good.
Thank you.
Mike?
Do we get many complaints on this?
Not really. Once, once in a while, we actually get them.
On-street parking, where there was, um, one attempt to get an overnight parking on a long-term basis in 10 years, is this kind of the same road we're going down?
Yeah, I mean, we, we really frankly don't get very many complaints about, you know, recreational vehicle storage. Once, once in a while, we do, this is, you know, obviously when we've had recently, but, you know, we don't get very many complaints about this.
But it probably is in the older neighborhoods because like Susan said, the newer neighborhoods have covenants and restrictions.
Correct.
Not even, I mean
Right. Well, the newer towns, there are the newer subdivisions that are, you know, having homeowners' associations or restrictive covenants, a lot of times, yeah, they say you can't have an RV or a boat or whatever, you have to store it inside a garage. So, you're absolutely correct that that's usually the case.
So, it's an older area?
Older parts of town, these more central parts of town are typically where you're seeing people parking them.
You see, there, there is a lady in the audience, I don't know if she'd like to speak, Patricia Hershtick?
I believe you don't want to speak, but I know you can't believe what this discussion's going on and you're not seeing
Please come up.
Careful look out their door, it's this huge camper sitting in the driveway.
Please come up, if, please come up then, if you would.
I went online and searched and found several online where you can see what they look like. And as far as not affecting the house values, I know somebody that sold their house and the real estate agent said, "I'm amazed you sold it. That camper across the street is absolutely horrible." So, I'm the one that put in the complaint. I think it's terrible. I thank you so much for supporting this city. I mean, I felt like I moved into a trailer park.
Sorry.
Yeah. So, I'll leave these pictures here so you can look at and see if you'd like to look at your front window at it.
Yeah, I was at a meeting this morning at Chicago Metro Police Agency for Planning with a number of other mayors in the region and this, we kind of got on this subject because we got into enforcement ordinances on a variety of fronts. And interestingly, Batavia was highly complimented for our chicken ordinance and many mayors are telling their administrators or whatever, go dig up the Batavia ordinance on chickens because they seem to think we've done it all right. A number of cities expressed the concern about campers, as we're hearing here tonight, specifically that, I don't know if we've had, that people turn them into second residences on, in their, on their property. And if they've got a, you know, a divorce in progress, well, one will move out and one of them will live in the trailer and one will live in the house, or if they've got a, some new relatives have arrived or children problems or, I heard all kinds of unique ways that these trailers are being used in other parts of the region and which is forcing a number of cities and village boards to take some type of enforcement action regarding them. And this home thing seems to be a really wild card in the mix here that you get these big camper trailers in your yard and suddenly, one mayor said he even had a situation where some people were renting it out and, you know, they kind of behind the scenes, but there was some shenanigans going on with that. So, I guess, you know, I think one of the things we should do is look at, you know, timing on this stuff, that you just can't bring this thing in here and let it sit here for 12 months out of the year, uh, without some accountability put behind it as to what's going on. Because that seems to be some way that a lot of people in maybe Batavia or another, I know of one instance in town where Rhonda has, we've got a, one of, one person moved one of these into their backyard and I think even tried to take the wheels off of the vehicle and then we had some evidence that they were kind of letting some people live in this situation. And I know she was up there at night and doing a whole bunch of different stuff with this. So, this is, as it's already been pointed out, this is a problem in town and while fortunately it's not a large problem, it's probably one that we need to, my view, we need to tighten this up a little bit and put some further controls on it as to what you can and cannot do with one of these. And specifically, I don't think we want to turn these into allowing them to become kind of pseudo-duplexes in disguise where you've got your house you're living in and then you've got your camper in the driveway that somebody is paying you to live in it or whatever we're doing with these things. So, there's, there's some tricks in the bag here that come back to bite other cities and I heard about that this morning.
We, the, our, our current regulations do not allow them to be occupied though, so you cannot, you cannot live in
But we're probably not monitoring that.
Unless we get a complaint, right.
Mm-hmm. Do you get, do you have enough feedback from this discussion?
Well, I have feedback enough that some people would like to see some changes. I, I don't know that, you know, we have a particular direction unless we'd like to send it to the plan commission and we can let them
Can we, do we take a straw poll?
Yeah.
All right. How many people would be interested in seeing some modification? Sorry. Uh, do you have now, direction?
Well, how
It needs to go to
Direction, we'd like to do something as to specifics, I don't
Yeah, but, but specifics.
Yeah, you want to throw, all right, go ahead.
I mean, I, for me, I'd say put it in, things, they, things, vehicles should be stored. I mean, if you want it two weeks before you leave on a trip, you have it two weeks in your driveway, people getting it ready, they come back from their trip, two weeks to clean it up, put it in storage.
That sounds good. I would agree with that.
I think anything more than short-term for, you know, prep or use or whatever, it should not be stored in front of the house, whether it's alongside of a garage, like I have mine behind a fence alongside my house. That's why I built the house the way I did it on the lot, the way I built the driveway, was so that I knew I had a place to park my boat that wasn't in my front yard.
Okay.
So, I've always done that. And that's something that I think, if it's going to be anything longer or, you know, permanent storage, like you store it there over the winter or whatever, it should not be out in front of the house. That's one I would like to make sure
We need to define it too. We need to find what, what that size is, whether it's, you know, whatever that might be.
I, I, I think this really just needs to go to the plan commission. I mean, there needs to be, the community needs to have time to think about this and hear about it. I mean, there's, I think a lot of it is just so much opinion.
Um, I'm not so sure that I wouldn't rather have a nice 25-foot, $400,000 motorhome parked
in front of my neighbor's house instead of the fishing boat that's got dead fish guts in it. Okay? So, I mean, it's, it's, it's opinion. It's, it's, a lot of it's opinion. So, and like Scott said, is it going to be a trailer with a jet ski on it or is it going to be, you know, uh, somebody with a snowmobile trailer that he uses during the winter only that he likes to bring home and then take every weekend when he goes snowmobiling? So, there's gonna, there's a lot of, I mean, I understand what Mike's saying about the camper and what the woman is very upset about.
I think it's pretty well defined. Recreation vehicle, recreation, if it's a boat, it's a recreation vehicle.
Well, that's the way they're defining almost everybody.
Kind of, all is the same.
Yeah.
Camper, boat, it's all recreational vehicle.
Correct.
I, that's what we have plan commission for, people. I think we need to let them
I think it has to go to plan commission, but can I just say that we really do have to weigh what Scott's saying? I've ridden with Rhonda quite a bit. She's, I see what she battles just with motor vehicles that don't move in my ward. We add this to her plate. I, I'm a huge advocate for it. It's a problem for us in our ward. But I'm not sure how she's supposed to handle anything else. So, I just wanted to say that. It's got to be weighed in there too.
Thank you. Anything else?
So, I guess I'm hearing that, um, take it to plan commission. I, I think there's been some sentiment to, um, change it so that front yard parking would be restricted, uh, except for two weeks for the beginning and the end of the season type, type things and then see where else, you know, they, they may come with it. At least that's what, I'm hearing from several.
I, I guess, Marty, the neighbors you have that have motorhomes, do they leave them there year-round or?
No. And that's where I'm saying, we're, we're, we're going off on complete extremes where we're thinking about either banning things entirely or just letting things go as-is. That's why I was saying to, with Mike, I was agreeing with his point about broken down, dilapidated stuff. Nobody wants to see that. And that's where in our neighborhood, those pictures look like our neighborhood. I look out my front door and see three houses like that, but I know that they aren't parked there overnight for weeks and years on end. That's where the, the strengthening of the ordinance can be maintained as far as how long you can keep those things there. I think, back to Mike's point, if the thing looks like a broken down piece of junk, it doesn't matter if it's there one day or three years. People don't want to see that and we have ordinances already on the books that we don't always have to reinvent the wheel, making it harder for, um,
But I don't think we do in this instance.
No, no, no. We've got the ordinance for broken down vehicles. This could be incorporated under that. We've got an ordinance on the books for living in the vehicles. That was a concern that was brought up. So, we have ordinances on the books where I think where it can be tightened up is make sure that we're not creating more regulations that we already have regulations for.
Okay, thank you. Do you have enough direction?
I think so.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we've already done ordinance 16-65, so we're going to go on to item 10, which is the approval for the 2017 council and committee of the whole and plan commission meeting schedule. There's other meetings on the schedule also. I looked it over, I didn't see any dates that I thought really needed to be changed. The only one I thought, and we can always change it ahead of time, Mayor, but the, um, there is a meeting scheduled for the COW on December 26th, the day after Christmas and most likely
You should probably make a motion to eliminate that one.
And the same with, uh, January 2nd. There probably wouldn't be anything for the city council on January 2nd. So, I would move to amend the committee, the, uh, the, uh, calendar for the committee and council meetings to eliminate December 22nd and December, or January 2nd meetings.
Second.
Motion by Brown, motion by Brown, second by Bottomet. On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that now makes it 163 meetings that are scheduled for the year.
You know, as you may remember, last year when we got into this, because of all the conflicts that start to arise, I just looked at my calendar here. I mean, you've got December 20th and 27th. I think we don't have, we can leave them in the schedule, but I think when we get nearer to it, we can take a motion from the council to cancel those, those two meetings because I know from my previous experience, we have a hard time with all the stuff going, people going on trips and family coming in and all this other stuff that if we don't have it done by then, we're, we're probably not going to get it done. So.
Okay, project status?
Fourth, or the fifth Tuesday, the way you labeled the fifth Tuesday COW meetings, how are things going or checking in? That was nice. Did you do that? No, that's Jeanette. Oh, okay. Yeah, thanks. Sorry.
What was that?
Problem. Well, the fifth.
Use the mic, please.
The fifth Tuesday of the month had something by the COW that said, how are we doing or checking in? Or it was kind of a, it was a nice, nice addition, I thought.
All right. So item 11 and project status, that could have been brought up under that.
Oh, sorry.
Dave didn't think it was a nice addition.
It was a nice addition.
Laura, do you have any project status for us?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. One of the things, alongside the Larson Becker properties, our streets department worked with Mark and Brett Larson to create six additional spaces along the street there. So recognizing the need for additional parking and every little bit helps, we were able to eke out six more spaces. Also, Art Stop, may have noticed, there is a new sculpture that has appeared there. I'm not exactly sure of the background of how art is placed at that corner, but I'm investigating that just so that we can have more, like, prior notice of the things that are going to be placed there. At least it won't come as a surprise as Mayor and I are headed to the Metro West Dinner. Also, an update on One Washington Place, Shodin has submitted their plans to community development. And we will make those plans available on our website so that the public can, can view those plans as well, as soon as possible, both on the website and also on the Facebook page, the city Facebook page and the Facebook page that is dedicated to the One Washington Place project. The other thing I wanted to update you on was the branding project. We had a meeting of the steering committee this morning and we were able to narrow the field from 10 prospects down to four that we would like to interview. And we are going to try to find a date to conduct those interviews sometime between November 1st and November 18th with the goal of identifying the company that we would like to work with prior to the end of the year so that as we come back from the holidays, we can begin to work on the project. And that's all that I have unless you have any questions about particular projects.
Anybody have anything?
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to others. Anybody have another? Okay, we're going to go on to executive session for the purpose of setting the price of land for sale. So I need a motion for that.
No move. Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Serrano, enter into executive session for the purpose of setting the price for land for sale. So we'll take a few minutes, change the tape, clear the room and have our executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so we have all in favor with the exception of Alman Wolfing, and he's opposed.